Great, good evening, everyone. My name is David Freese, the Mayor of Tongonoxie. We're calling to order this regular meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council for July 19, 2021. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Mayor Freese.
Present.
Ms. Stevens is absent, Mayor.
Good. Would you all join us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Item two is the approval of minutes. Is there any discussion or questions about the minutes from the last meeting?
Make a motion that we approve is presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. How do you handle that, Mr. Porter, with Ms. Stevens not here? Is that still unanimously?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Still is.
Okay, item three, consent agenda, the review of the bill payments. Anybody have any comment or questions on the bill payments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving to item four, old business. We have no old business listed and nothing has been added since this morning. We'll just move on to new business then. Item A, ordinance 1498. George, you've got this one, I think?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So, the first item is ordinance 1498, which is rezoning Lot 4 and Lot 6 of the Tongonoxie Business Park and zoning it to a planned business district. And there was a preliminary development plan that also accompanied this item when it went through the July 1 Planning Commission. Mr. Porter, in the folder, I put an aerial. So, in your packet, you have all the materials that went with this item to Planning Commission. It did get unanimous approval. I wanted to touch on something, on a couple of things. You probably recall in the discussion, what we were doing with this action is adding 16 acres that weren't part of the original plat we did when we platted the business park back in 2017, and then adding that 16 acres in, and then dividing that and adding it to existing Lot 4 and the existing Lot 6. And so, we had just, there's an aerial that kind of shows roughly where those are. So, this is the plat, preliminary plat, that has that added in. So, there's one other one. Thank you, there you go. So, this will give you an idea of the existing Lot 4, the existing Lot 6, and this Lot A represents that approximate 16 acres that we added in. And then, the preliminary plat does show how those were adjusted. I wanted to read, though, real quickly from one of the findings report information that also later was embedded in the planning staff report. And so, when you look at these lots, you know, we took the overall park from 140 acres to 155 acres. Lot 6, we didn't add any new lots. It still has a total of six lots. But when you looked at Lot 4 in particular, in the original, it was 31 acres, and now it's going to just under 36 acres. And in the preliminary development plan, it had anticipated a 450,000 square foot building. That's what the new preliminary development plan shows. So, we basically, we added more acreage to the lot, but did not increase the building size. On Lot 6, kind of same scenario. It was just under 38 acres. Now, it's going to be just over 49 acres. The original building area on the original preliminary development plan from 2017 showed a 530,000 square foot building, and now we're showing a 435,000 square foot facility. So, same thing. We added acreage, but did not increase the footprint that we showed in the plans from 2017. So, again, tonight's action is, although it accompanies the preliminary development plan, what we really need is the approval on the zoning. And again, the zoning is really dealing strictly with the way we added acreage to those two lots. Be happy to answer any other questions, should you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. What's the value of that land? It's kind of a side quest question, I apologize, but I just wondered if you might have that?
What the county has it appraised at?
Yeah.
I think roughly between the two lots, it's about $200,000 is what we're actually paying taxes on.
Were there any pertinent questions at planning and zoning? About this before it was passed?
I don't, from the Planning Commission? I don't recall any significant discussion.
Okay.
So, these items, so these were the first step. There's an additional, the project will come back in the August Planning Commission, and they'll be advancing a final development plan and a final plat. And so, there may be some additional questions then, but we've been working with the Hill's team to advance those documents and don't anticipate any issues or surprises based on what we've seen thus far.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Anything from legal at all? Any concerns or?
No. This is a, like George said, it is a rezoning, even though it's already zoned BP. The additional acreage was not, well, actually, I believe that might have been included in the rezoning as well, but the key here is preliminary development plan.
Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd make a motion, the City of Tongonoxie approve ordinance number 1498. Ordinance number 1498 is an ordinance amending the Tongonoxie zoning and subdivision regulations by rezoning approximately 85.49 acres in the Tongonoxie Business Park located at southeast corner of 222nd Street, Kansas Avenue, Tongonoxie, Kansas, from BP Business Park District to VP Business Park District with amended preliminary development plan.
Well done. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
All ayes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porter. On to item B, consider approval of purchase of 12-inch looped water line supplementary materials. Mr. Brackovich?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So, actually, items B and C are related, but would require separate motions. They are part of the 12-inch looped water line. This is part of when we received some additional grant funds from the county to complete our interceptor sewer project. They also recommended running some redundancy in the water supply to the park. So, we've designed this. We've acquired the pipe itself. These two items, though, are related. So, item B is the purchase of supplementary materials, valves, fitting, some hydrants. And then, item C is to contract directional boring. So, when we cross Kansas Avenue, even though it's a gravel road, the county is now mandating no open trenches, open digging. We have to directionally bore that line. And so, these are kind of the two additional costs associated with that 12-inch loop line. I'll also take this opportunity to talk about our interceptor sanitary sewer project. We, for the month of July, that project is 70% complete. We are slightly, excuse me, ahead of schedule on that and hope to complete it in advance of our, you know, anticipated completion late summer or early fall. So, that's progressing nicely. This will be a complimentary piece to that. Again, be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion?
What's the additional cost? I mean, obviously, the 11.5 is the boring cost. We would have had some cost to go across, but very little, I would assume.
Yeah.
Kent probably answered that.
Kent would probably have a better idea.
So, it's really probably almost 11,500 to bore the gravel road.
Correct.
So, you want?
If we just done, had done what we normally do, is just cross it, open up a trench, put it in, and move on. 500 bucks?
It'd be the cost of the pipe, so.
Just really?
A little bit of gravel.
Okay.
I talked to the county, and they are requiring it throughout the whole county, so there wasn't any way to get around it.
I appreciate it, Kent. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to process that. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, the question I have is for Schulte Supply, Inc., the price we're going to use for the purpose of the motion is 22,497.57, not the older one?
Yeah, that's the way I see it.
Mr. Hempel, that's correct. These prices have been subject to some changes at the last minute, but we think this quote for 22,497.57 will cover all the commodities we need from that company. And for the ease of the council, you could combine the two motions in the agenda packet into a single motion to authorize the purchases, if you'd like.
Does anyone have questions about the other item? Item D?
No.
Nope, sorry, item C, I apologize. Any further questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to complete commodities purchases for the 12-inch looped water line project through Schulte Supply for an amount not to exceed 22,497.57, as well as authorize the acceptance of the quote from Westland Construction for directional boring for an amount not to exceed 11,500.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Porter, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
All ayes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Now, we're on item D. Request budget authority to complete cleanup of structure and property at 602 Yoke Street. Mr. Brackovich?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So, this is related to an item that you've seen several times before in a public meeting. It has to do with a structure fire that occurred at this address back in March. I'm going to ask the city attorney to maybe go again over the outlined timeline that was put together for this, that incorporated both state statute associated with this process as well as the city code. So, Anna, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, the outline in your packets does lay out all the steps that are required and the actions that have occurred with respect to the action steps that are completed. The governing body did conduct a formal hearing. I would also note that your city code does also require informal discussions with, from the building inspector. I understand that there have been several discussions between the building inspector and the property owner. And then, you did adopt the resolution that declared the structure unsafe or dangerous and ordered demolition to occur beginning, or to commence by July 7, 2021, and to, the owner must diligently prosecute the same thereafter. So, where you are now is that that date has come and gone. I do not believe there have been, I don't know if there's been any actions with the property that would need to be addressed, but it sounds like it hasn't, demolition has not commenced. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Thank you, Ms. Kirstelich. Anyone have any questions for the city attorney?
No.
Mr. Brackovich, do you want, do you have anyone else to come to the podium?
Well, we did have Mr. Harder, the building inspector, available if you had any questions about communications or anything that he's witnessed on site. But otherwise, we're ready to proceed. The timeframes allotted have come and gone, so staff would like to take this out to an RFP to receive bids for the demolition and cleanup work.
Okay. Is there any questions from counsel? Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Sir, I'm sorry to ask you this, but can you come up to the podium and tell your name?
It's all right. Give me a second.
It's fine. We're going to limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Porter has the clock.
Okay. I'll try not to babble.
You're all right.
Yeah, my name's Steve Stein. I'm on the place. The city codes guy, gentleman, has been in contact with me two or three times to see where progress is going, and I hope I've been truthful with him. And I, you know, some times I've just didn't look like nothing's getting done, and I apologize. I have the weather, stuff like that, lack of manpower. I'm just trying to get 30 years of material that I had off the place so we can make a decision. Me and him have discussed, or more or less knocked heads, is an old farmer's term, on that residence, whether it can be reused. Being in building construction and him being, you know, the job that he has, everybody's welcome to their opinions. That being a house, you don't have a foundation. The foundation walls are all wanting to complete. That's the way they built them back then. You know, every room is a firewall, it's fire, you know, structure all the way up to the roof structure, and each room is kind of isolated. The actual structure itself is three bedrooms, a living room, and a kitchen area that I feel that I may be able to save and still put a two-bedroom, which would sufficiently supply me with what I need, being just by myself. But also, like I told him, I've been dealing with the bank as far as, you know, the insurance and what they want to do. I haven't heard back from Mr. Christensen yet, and I, he's been keeping in contact with me and been very decent about it. As soon as I hear about it, I've got four gentlemen that like to buy it, and they're ready to demo. They've all own demolition companies, if they decide they want to tear it down, which they do. I'm kind of the one that wants to save it if I need a house to stay. I'm basically, I'm staying at my family's farm. So, if I can save my home, I'd like to take that alley or use it as an alternate. If I can't, I understand it, too. I don't think we've had any engineers to come in there and do an actual assessment of the foundation. I've seen it. I've been in the trade. I don't think it is, but, you know, I'm not an engineer either. Nobody in this room is an engineer, at least not that I know. So, my question is, I know you've got to do things according to your guidelines and your timelines and stuff like that. I'm real close to having mucked my stuff out of there. I'm looking at a couple of weeks, give or take. I think I can have it. Like I said, the rain's been kicking me in the butt. That's, rain's been a dirty word in my language, trying to get stuff out of there. Every day I go there, it's worse than raining since March. So, if you guys can, I don't want special privileges that you don't give to anybody else, but I hope that I've been decent about everything and, you know, got fair next weekend. Everybody enjoy the fair. After that, maybe, you know, second weekend to, or the second council meeting, I'll be more than glad to come here and say, hey, this is where it's at. You can tell them, well, we gave it a good shot. It didn't work, or it did work, you know, whatever. And then, let's make a definite, say, you know, let's take it to the ground, Steve, on, you know, the second council meeting in August. And I have my quorums. I mean, I gave it my best shot, and I'll do what you guys want me to do at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Stein. I love this community greatly. That love extends to you. But I fear for your safety, and I fear for other people's safety personally. That's my opinion.
Right.
But I appreciate you coming up and speaking with us tonight.
On the safety matter, if I may, you know, I've been in the building trade for 25 years. I'm a construction superintendent. I used to build schools like you guys are putting out here, multimillion dollars. So, I'm a little educated to what the construction trade is. And I'm a safety officer, too, with that company, always have been. So, I know what safety is. I've got all my safety pins, my 10, my 30 hour, I've got all that stuff, plus being a safety officer. I wouldn't allow anybody in the house who's unsafe. Wouldn't allow myself to go in there. So, I hope you believe me when I say, if it was structurally unsafe, nobody's going in there. I've been in there, yes, but I'm not allowing anybody else, no. I wouldn't do that to anybody.
All right.
And realistically, to myself, too. So, I'm not going in something where it looks like the roof's going to come down and collapse on me, no.
Yeah.
I've been around too long, 57 years, you know, put up with my crap. Got to give me another 10 more years or so, so.
I appreciate it, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion?
George, under the process, we'll let bids, the bids will have to come back to the council for final approval for total.
Yes, for a contract amount, yeah.
Yep.
We anticipate bringing that.
We will hear it again, and it will be here in front of us again for approval or denial or?
Correct.
Do you have an expected timeframe? Couple of weeks to collect?
We've reached out to a handful of firms that do this type of work and anticipate there will be interest. Right now, we're probably thinking, develop an RFP, put it out for a couple of weeks and see what the bids come in at.
So, at the very earliest, we'll revisit it again in August?
Correct.
Okay.
Probably the second meeting in August.
Yep. So, Mr. Stein, you have a couple more weeks, as you asked.
I'd be more than happy, I've dealt with demo companies that I know myself, that I've dealt with.
Okay.
I've taken a lot of burnt buildings down in Kansas City and building buildings, so.
Right.
I can give you, if this don't work out, I'd be more than happy to give you names and numbers to help out.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, we authorize staff to collect bids for collection of demolition and abatement and award the project to the company submitting the lowest qualified bid at the most earliest council meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Mr. Porter, would you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
All ayes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porter. Moving on to item E, consider request to install pet waste collection stations on city property. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Monica Gee with Wizard of Paws, a downtown dog grooming and daycare business on 4th Street. She has submitted the letter that was included in the city council packet for this evening and has introduced the concept of possibly providing pet waste bag dispersal stations across the city, some on city of Tongonoxie property and perhaps some on other public entity or private individual properties, based on an ongoing discussion that I think she wishes to have. So, I won't steal all her thunder, but happy to answer any questions from staff perspective, too. Thanks.
So, pet waste station disposal bag receptacles are common in a lot of cities, in their parks and their walking trails, and it's just something that is needed in our community. You'll see it out there all the time, on Facebook, on general comments. So, I installed one in front of my business on the sidewalk in front, and I clearly do not have as many dogs come there and use it as bags are dispensed and are put in the dispenser, the trash dispenser, as we have clientele. So, it's clearly getting used. We have people thanking us all the time for that, and it's something I can see we need to build, too. I've spoke with the rec, the VFW, I've talked with K Suter, with Gallagher Park, and along our walking trails is where I foresee it being beneficial. And then, grow it from there, maybe into neighborhoods if we need to. But I'm willing to make the donation as my business to provide these, say, the first 10, to see if they're useful and supply the bags as replacements for a year. I want to see how the project goes, and if it's useful, if it's not useful and we're not replacing bags, then it's not needed. I did speak with Kent Haskett, and he's willing for the city staff to install them in the designated areas that we see they would be best. And I want to work with staff on where we see those working. So, I've gotten all the entities of where we would put it, except for the city's permission and on the public trails. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I don't propose putting the disposal area. I don't want to put a trash can on these signs, because we don't have the staffing to go and change them. I don't think the city needs to do that as well, and I don't think it's something Honey Creek would go trekking into a park to do. I'm only proposing the pole and the bag dispensers. And then, if we want to grow it, we can. There's options for signage if we want, but I'm not particular on that, on what we do. I included pictures of some examples, but I'm not, I'm not set on any one. We just need something to let people know that that's what they're for. And of course, if we get into it and there's a certain area that they're being damaged or excessively used, because we know people are just taking them out, or kids are messing with them, then we know that's not the right spot for them, because that's not what they're designated for. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions or get some insight.
So, you're thinking of starting in Chieftain Park? Do I have that correct?
Well, my thought is, we need about 10, but we need one more on 4th Street. And we need one in front of Gallagher Park, maybe one down the sidewalk a little farther, a couple in Chieftain Park, a couple in VFW, and then around the trail system, because that's where it's being used. It'd be great to move it on down towards the elementary school on Pleasant, but I don't know if that's something we do the first year, or if we build this up. I just want to see where we go before, and the usable. We want to make sure people are using it before we go any farther. But I just want thoughts and?
Well?
Questions.
Mr. Porter, what's the estimated cost to the city for labor, whatever, to put anything in? Nothing?
Mayor, I don't believe the level of effort we're talking about with a handful, maybe 10 installations, would require any additional staff overtime, or obviously, would be within the frame of the current staffing we have. So, I don't think there's a cost to isolate for that in that sense.
Okay. And no other costs either, correct?
This is 100% donated for one year. Once I buy the equipment to be installed, it's yours forever. But for one year, I'm proposing supplying the bags, and if it's a, it's a good resource, I'll continue. I mean, I'm not going anywhere. Most of you know that, so.
That's very generous, Ms. Gee, considering that really what we just need is common sense, people to pick up their stuff.
Correct.
Their dog stuff.
Yes, hopefully.
Hopefully not, hopefully.
Any discussion, counsel?
Well, Monica, thank you for making the offer. I will tell you that I believe, being on the council back when we approved putting in the trail a long time ago, and it is an asset, and very few communities are walkable from one end of the community to the other on a sidewalk. And we'll have to figure out how to get one out the industrial park now, but that's down the road. But it is an asset that this community just ought to cherish, and I, for one, walk on it almost every day, almost quite a ways on it, and I am a minority when it comes to having it. I don't have a dog, nor do I desire to have one, but I'm a minority, because most people do. And I will tell you that every day, 50% of the people pick up, the other 50 don't, from what I see. I don't know if they will use that.
I don't know if they will either.
I don't know, and I hope it does, and I appreciate you donating it. That's awesome, but I hope it solves the problem, but I doubt it. But thank you for, thank you for bringing.
I agree. I mean, that's where I'm making the step, because it's being requested.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Porter, do you need a motion from us tonight, or are we just going to move forward?
Mayor, I think if permission is being granted by the council to utilize public space by installing these, I think you could either do that broadly tonight, or if you'd rather come back at a future meeting with a proposal of? rather come back at a future meeting with a proposal of exact sites that you wanna vet. Since they're mobile, it's not like it's something that can't be adjusted once they've been installed on the post and the city property that they would be installed at, so I think that's just the level of discretion you have in your motion.
I'm comfortable with Mr. Haskett and Ms. Gee and staff to figure this out, I don't think that we need to weigh in on where they need to go, so...
Agreed.
It is in right of way, it's not in, or easement, it's not in, they will be on somebody's property, but it's gonna be in right of way or...
I guess my question is, make sure the property owner wants one there.
Correct.
Just don't be putting them up, and then the property owner don't want it there to begin with. I think you need to obtain permission and then come back with a map.
Okay, that sounds like a...
That's very reasonable.
Sounds like good direction.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thanks, Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, moving on to item F, consider approval of notice of the Leavenworth County clerk to, of intent to potentially exceed the revenue neutral rate. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, mayor. Included in the agenda packet tonight is a draft notice of revenue neutral rate intent. We've spoken with the county clerk preliminarily about an acceptable fashion of notice, and she's indicated that the document in the agenda packet would suffice for her notification tomorrow morning by the July twentieth deadline of the city's intent to potentially exceed what would be the revenue neutral rate for the 2021 levy for the 2022 budget year property tax revenue requirement. So the city council won't consider approval of the 2022 budget until September, based on the timeframes for budget approval, but there would be this opportunity for an additional public hearing on September seventh that would be part of this publication triggered by this notification to the county clerk. The mill levy included in the publication and the notice to the clerk is forty-five point two-three-three mills, and that's the aggregate total of the city's general fund and debt service mill levy, combined with the library's employee benefits fund and operations fund mill levy. And so that would be the maximum mill levy available to the city council for the approval of the 2022 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have this correct, that it's the second or third straight year that we've kept things flat?
I believe it's the third. I'd have to go back and check, but again, it's not the approval tonight, it's only the maximum level, so, yeah.
Great work. Does anybody have any questions?
If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the notice of revenue neutral rate of intent to the Leavenworth County clerk in the amount of forty-five point two-three-three mills.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move it on to city manager agenda. Mr. Brackovich?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. So we have one item here, and this is some discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and the funds that we anticipate receiving within the next two weeks. So it's Mr. Porter's pulling that up. It's a presentation that just, I get to concentrate on something I really enjoy, and that's acronyms, so let me see if I can get them all right. So American Rescue Plan Act, we'll call ARPA for short. This specific program is the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, or LFRF, but for ease of my own speaking ability, I'm gonna stick with ARPA as we go through this. So, next slide, Dan, if you can get there. There you go, thank you. Yep, so a couple of things I wanna address during the presentation. Talk real quick about how these are different from the CARES Act funds that we had, or CRF funds that we used last year, and implementation of that, timelines, dispersments, and then just briefly touch on eligible expenses, because we'll be building the proposal to bring back to you at a future meeting this year. So the CARES Act, or CRF, if you recall, that was a really compressed timeframe, so first, the state, what they did, unless you were a city of a certain population size, the state sent all the money to the county, and then the county, we had to present our CARES Act plan to the county, get their approval, but essentially, what needed to happen was between August and November, we had to present the plan to the county, wait on their approval, and then basically purchase commodities, contract for services, and have those funds expended, and I'm sure you all remember, and I know staff does, I mean, that was a hundred day period, or sixty-nine working days. And so, again, waiting on another entity to verify we had funds, submitting a plan to that entity, and then along the way, submitting invoices, again, to the county to get approval and issue payments. So the next slide just kinda shows what we use that for. The primary focus of our CARES Act funding was first, getting aid out in the form of grants to our small businesses, and then secondarily, we really just focused on community initiatives. So of the eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, I'll round up, that we had out of that funding, we did four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten in small business grants. So that includes CRF, and then we did about fifty-some thousand, fifty-nine thousand in the CDBG funds that were also available. We did the expanded free Wi-Fi, so we noticed that in our open public spaces, like at the parks, we didn't have any Wi-Fi capability. Same thing at the library, as they were on reduced hours or social distancing limited the amount of people, we boosted the Wi-Fi in their parking lot, and so, again, that was a direct benefit to the community, and we continue to monitor that, monitor that with midco to see what kind of usage we're getting. And then we focused a lot on municipal services, a lot of that is in this building, so for those folks that aren't familiar, this was the former library, we built a new facility with voter-approved sales tax funds, and then we used that money to revamp this building as a new council chambers and municipal court. A ton of investment went into just the electronics here to get us up to speed so that we could livestream these meetings and offer them as recordings to view later on the city's YouTube channel. So again, a big focus was community and small business. So ARPA is a little bit different. Total allocation for the state of Kansas is about four-point-nine billion. You see the list there of how those funds are generally allocated. I highlighted the one that has to do with us as a local city government. Unfortunately, we're not getting that full amount, so we're getting some share of it. The calendar dates are a little bit different, so, again, comparing it to the CARES Act funds, we're simply entering the city into the state portal, so we'll be getting funds directly from the state, they're not going through the county this time. The dates, though, you get one issuance, half your money will come in 2021, a second tranche will come in 2022. You have to have costs incurred by December thirty-first of 2024, so that could give us an opportunity to queue some larger projects, provided they meet the eligibility requirements, and then those costs have to be expended by December thirty-first of 2026. So a much friendlier timeline to get a plan put together, identify needs, than that compressed a hundred-day timeframe we had with CARES Act. Total funding, though, on the next slide, and I'm kinda moving through this quickly, so feel free to ask a question, there's not too many more slides. Our total funding that the city should receive is about eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. That's fairly close to what we got out of the CARES Act fund. Again, those are based on population numbers, so another reason to always try to ensure that we have good participation in our census count, since you never know when funding sources like this pop up. And that shows you how you break down those funds into two equal amounts for twenty-one and twenty-two. For comparison's sake, kinda trying to show what other cities are receiving, and actually, I should've focused on the title, NEUs are non-entitlement units, and so there are certain cities that already have a relationship with CDBG and HUD funding. In this case, the state also expanded that, any city below fifty thousand in population was termed a non-entitlement unit, and so instead of getting funds directly, we had to go through the portal here. City Leavenworth, eight-point-five million, City of Lansing, one-point-eight, Baser, just over nine-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. School districts, if you recall that first slide I had of how the ARPA money was dispersed in the state of Kansas, they get money through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, or what I believe is pronounced ESER. This is, Mr. Felkamp was kind enough to share the numbers with me, it looks like they get three tranches that would occur over the next three to five years, and you see the numbers associated with that. I kinda wanted to do that, it doesn't really impact what we're doing, but I wanted you to be aware that there's other local taxing entities that also are receiving some share of these funds. I don't profess to know what their rules are, and I can only assume they're gonna be different than our eligible expenses. So brings me to my last slide, what are the eligible expenses? I had shared with you previously the federal guidelines, so I'm not gonna dive into a lot of this in any great detail. They're responding to public health emergency, negative economic impacts, a lot of that focus has to do with getting the vaccine distributed, what do facilities that deal with sick people in your community, there's some area, some fairly ambiguous language that can allow for an expanded definition of, you know, PPE, but we're still kinda going through that to see what we would be comfortable making a recommendation on. Revenue loss, there's very specific details. I don't think that, based on the federal guidelines and the revenue loss that we saw as a community, we're gonna have anything that would be eligible under that definition, so that probably doesn't apply. My favorite one is general, and the guidelines talk a lot about what you can't do here, it's not a, you know, rainy day fund, it's not a slush fund, you know, probably the closest one here is infrastructure that's not water and sewer, but then again, you have to make some direct correlation back to how it, you know, how it's impacted by the coronavirus. And that brings me really to the last two categories, and I think the ones that I'm feeling comfortable making a presentation to you on premium pay or hazard pay for employees. You'll recall that even though we limited access to our facilities, we never shut down any of our services. We tried to spread folks around in different facilities where we couldn't properly socially distance. I think we, even though those were eligible items under the CARES Act money, we didn't focus on that, I feel comfortable making a recommendation that we take a look at some options of allowing our staff to receive some hazard pay for service they did from March through December of last year. And then really, the water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, it's pretty self-explanatory. I do think we have some water and sewer items that are on the horizon that would qualify for this, and so as we look at alternative funding sources, we would be wise to take a look at how these ARPA funds might be able to help us out on those costs. So like I mentioned, this is my last slide, it clearly, my intention wasn't to present any sort of a plan or policy tonight, but to give it a touch point at a public meeting where we talk about, we're anticipating these funds going. Mr. Porter was successful in submitting our information in the state portal. Again, we're expecting those funds within the next two weeks, at least that, the funds that, you know, that first tranche in 2021, and then between now and then, hopefully maybe by the first meeting in August, we might have a draft plan for your consideration. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have, though.
Any questions, anyone?
Just a general comment, George, I think it's the same comment I had on the first round of funding, and just in your assessment, please review, and I'm sure Anna will help, any clawback that there might be embedded in that thing. Not that I distrust federal government, but I just wanna make sure we understand if there are any potential clawbacks.
Will do. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Brackovich.
Good job.
Ms. Kirstelich, do you have anything in the city attorney report?
I have no items, mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem agenda, anything?
Only thing I have to report is that the Leavenworth County Planning Commission was reorganized a little bit to the fact that it has ten commissioners, instead of nine now. The chairman is limited to two years, and he's a non-voting member, except in a tie. So that's a change than it was, and every district has two. There's five districts, so that's the reason for ten.
City council's agenda, any counselors have anything?
I just wanted to report to the council that a few weeks ago, Councilman Hempel and I went to the Hills plant in Topeka, and we were invited over, and we arrived a little bit early, drove around the plant, then they were very gracious and gave us a tour through the plant, and sat down and gave us the idea and concept of what they were planning on doing. It was an excellent, excellent time for us to see what they do, how they do it, why they do it, look at the equipment, obviously, the building there, I think the facilities, the facility itself may be around fifty years old, the equipment was obviously much newer and updated, well-kept. We, I will speak for myself, I'll let Rocky speak if he wants to, but we had spent about twenty minutes early in advance and drove around and looked for the sights and the sounds, and I can tell you, that was very appropriate, everything we saw, well-maintained outside. Obviously, you just can't walk right up, you have to go through gates, which is normal. On the inside, it was equally well-maintained, all the staff was very gracious, they were all kind, pleasant, waved. We got to see how they did things, and even inside, I would say that probably the, that there is some noise, obviously, because you have machinery operating, but it was not very loud at all. Your weed eater is a lot worse, even if you're inside, I assure you, your weed eater's a lot louder. The smell itself, if you've been in a co-op where they have feed or something, it might have a slight odor of that, but it was not bad at all, and it was quite impressive. So I wanted to thank the Hills folks for taking us through. I would say about an hour and a half.
About an hour and a half, two hours.
I mean, it was, there's a lot more to that, but I won't go into it, but I'll let Rocky open that up. I just wanted to share that with the community.
Well, one of the things I was really impressed with is not only the employees, but also the cleanliness of the plant, how everybody knew their job. It just appeared that everybody knew their job, they knew what they had to do, and they all worked together to get it done. The cooperation among the employees was great, you could see it works with management. And I was really impressed, we seen the sign that showed the pay outside, the starting pay was over twenty-one dollars an hour, and some of the other pay was even bigger than that, but there was not much noise. I mean, all the noise was up higher or down lower, but the way the new plant is gonna be built, I think it's gonna be really impressive. And a lot of things that, in the old plant, where they only had eleven, twelve acres, and now they're sitting there with eighty-four, and it's all gonna be built at once, rather than added on all the time. It will be built at once, or good lick of it, with future room for expansion, and I was really thankful, and it was excellent education opportunity.
Yep.
I was really impressed with it, and I wanna thank them also for allowing us to take the tour of the place. I thought it was excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else?
I participated last week, maybe, the weeks run into each other, and then earlier today with Leavenworth County Port Authority, who is working on developing a program for a spec building somewhere in the county. Mr. Donnelly has been a part of that committee for, how long have you guys been talking it over?
Five months.
Five months, and they presented some of the details early on to the municipalities in the county to gauge interest. Obviously, the different communities have different levels of interest, anything from a ten-thousand-square-foot building to a fifty-thousand-square-foot spec building...
to a 50,000-square-foot spec building. So, they're continuing to try to develop a plan and gauge interest in the various cities to partner in on something like that. So, more information to, to come.
All right. Great. Thanks, Mr. Dale. I will concur with Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Hempel. I took a unsanctioned tour, I guess, around the place. I walked around it twice in different weather, and I've driven around it three times in different weather, and I would say there is that feed store smell on the east side, but it doesn't go beyond a block, I, that I can, that I could tell. This week, we have farmer's market at the library at 5:00. Anything else going on this week, anyone? Nope. All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?